I do. I appreciate the questions coming from Board Member Costin and Mask on those who were asking you the questions. I remember when this first started, there was some trepidation about what this meant, but I see the end game here. Here's what I do not want. I do not want predatory -- I don't like New Hall or Charter School postcards showing up in my mailbox. I send my kids where they need to go. Hi, Mark Winger, how you doing, buddy? But at the end of the day, I don't want predatory things going on out of this. I don't need to steal kids from another district. I don't need to pretend that they aren't something that we are. I don't want that. I want this to focus on what we do, what our staff does, and the successes we have. So please, don't let me find out. The rest of the board can figure out. I'll cry loud enough to overrule them. But I do not want predatory techniques used to try and steal other kids. That's not what we're all about. Am I clear? Consultant, I'm not asking you. I'm not asking you. You can't commit to the moral turpitude or lack thereof in this district. So are we good? Do you understand me? So this is for the oldest members of my fan club. Please tell me that there are no statements on the enrollment forms that say, "I certify that my child has never had an IEP or a 504 plan." Oh, I've seen that come through here. And other things like ACLU poster child language violation. So there's nothing like that on there. There's nothing exclusionary. Why are you all looking at me like this? We've come a really long ways, trust me. Anyway, no?
No.
Good. Okay, so I have this in front of me. The board has this in front of them. It's from Assurance Learning Academy. I'm not sure why this is in front of us this evening. I'm holding this up so you can do a records request. Come on. Anyway, my look at this and my understanding of charter law is this. A charter because of the 1,200 series that came out of New Hall, thank you Christie Smith and Mark Winger, was that a charter cannot make a submittal on one board meeting and then request a hearing. So there's got to be at least one day in between this showing up and the next board meeting. So I'm thinking that in my history, if something like this would show up, that someone would be on the screen making a "Hi, how are you? This is not a hearing, but we dropped this off to you today." So if that was the intention, whoever dropped this off to me had better drop it off next time, which is a month from now, and begin the process at that point. Somebody just wasted a month where I come from. That's not a ruling. It's just my understanding. If my understanding is incorrect in charter law, I will put up historical marker because that will be a first. But outside of that, I need to know why this is being presented to the board and if it was included in the information packet to the public. I don't think there's answers necessary for that. Good evening. I'm going to keep this short. I've got a lot in the transportation area. First off, one more time, my role as a board member, if you approach me in an email, if you send an email to the entire board, I'm going to run away from it because responding, even just "I got it" or whatever, we're violating the Brown Act. Brianna is our president this year. Anything that comes to me, I will say to Brianna, I think it's appropriate that I will answer to this, and we don't have discussions that way. Know that if you come to me, if you've ever come to me, I'm likely to give you a long series of theoreticals in which you're trying to go, "Why doesn't he answer a question?" And I'm really trying to tell you, yeah, round and round donut talk. It's government talk. There's nothing in the middle. And I'm just wanting to see how many times you'll stay on the merry-go-round until you get dizzy. But I, to Mr. Costin's point, I'm not up here to exercise my will on whatever. Everything, we hired the superintendent, and we're here to support the superintendent as the leader, the educational leader in the community. And we all have our opinions on what we think is important. But don't expect that I will give you an answer or be the miracle worker for you. It's going to go there and there. And I just, I appreciate your input and all that, and I take it into consideration. When I do have serious talks, they're pretty serious. But yeah, don't expect me to undermine the rest of the board in making important decisions and moving ahead based on one or two opinions. I'd never, ever talk about negotiations while they're ongoing. But I will tell you this. I see what's going on on television, and there's something, it's a new term. You heard it from me, a conflict entrepreneurism, meaning I take a small issue that's controversial, and I vilify everyone and create a platform that's not real to create some attention to myself and feed negative energy and besmirch people and do all that kind of thing. When we start having ex-supervenants giving positions on what the new superintendent is doing and why they would do something different, that looks to me like somebody's not making enough money in retirement or wherever they went to and want to come back. Only I would say that. I appreciate, we get updates as to what's going on, but never in my entire time as a board member without getting in trouble about what's going on back there. We get updates, and we know there are safety checks in place at the LACO level and at the budget level. And I have full confidence that the two teams that work together to come to solutions, they're all aware of what the parameters are and what the budget looks like. So I'm very proud of both sets of teams that aren't going out and creating conflict entrepreneurism and engaging and stuff like that. That's boring. That's tired. It makes me want to do like this so everyone yawns. Next, housekeeping. If you're going to send me an email as a board member, please route it through the superintendent's office. I like a collective of everything that's coming out of the superintendent's office to tell me officially as a board member, your capacity, you are being invited here. There are all kinds of considerations that no one considers. For example, if there is a sponsor that is asking you and inviting you to come to something, and they're paying for the dinner, there's Form 700 and reporting considerations. If it weren't for Yolanda rodeoing us and making sure that there's not five of us that are talking about it, I would be in federal prison. Don't try to make her do anything different. But please, if you're going to send me an invite to anything, make sure it comes from the district office. I love going to things. My work schedule doesn't allow me to take time off in the middle of the day, all day. But please, route your request to board members through the district office. Yolanda does a wonderful job in making sure that I stay out of trouble as much as she So, Agudosa Women's Club, you do a wonderful job of taking money from my wallet every time I stop by your boutique, but that's great. The amount of money that that organization has given our students has increased astronomically. And the one thing I would say is, please, in your consideration of students, please take a look at somebody who wants to go to, to be an electrician, who wants to be a plumber, who wants to be a trade person. Please give them equal consideration because there are a lot of paths out there, and I don't want to exclude people who have a promising future, who could get into a decent trade job if they could get a scholarship. So I appreciate everything you do, but please have the screening criteria include our CTE program. Finally, enjoy your time off. Get refreshed during Easter because if you're a kid that hasn't been working hard throughout the year, and it's coming to the end of the year, and you're freaking out because you're trying to play catch-up and your grades aren't that good, this is a time of year that kids need your support. They really do. And, you know, load your grades up in Ares, please. Have kids know where they're at. You don't want to have conflicts at home where you've got somebody with a hooked finger saying, "You know what? You're not going over there this weekend because it looks like you've got a D." Well, load up the assignments, please, and then we would know that. But guys, enjoy your time off. Recuperate. And the blessing in all of this is you will not have to hear my droning voice for more than a month. I'm not going to pull the consent calendar, but there's a number of contracts on here. I would remind staff that if any of these are continuing into next year, that at the onset of the next fiscal year, that we would include those contracts in the list of annual contracts along with it, not to exceed them out. To Mr. Costin's point, sometimes it's easy to like understand that there are some sensitivities that may show up on that list. And so you all know what I'm talking about. So it's not standard practice to display the list, but if there is someone on the list who has service and all that kind of thing, the board's hesitance to pull the list is kind of self-explanatory. So I would, and people that are going out after a long period of service, would you please check with them and ask them if you can summarize their service and present it to the board, and then open that up as a discussion point in and of itself? So that's not a direction. I just think it's good practice. Okay, not to put anybody on the spot, but I think there are transportation people here that work in transportation. So I'm going to run through a series of questions. One of them has already been answered. In my entire time of either sitting in the audience or being up here, I have never heard this discussed. So when I saw this, it was like, why did this come up? The only other time I ever heard this discussed was the board was discussing how to figure out how to have parents subsidize the cost of busing and whether that should be 300 or 500. And this was about the time that the district was looking at a negative certification coming from LACO. So I understand this. To the budget numbers, what part of the entire transportation cost is, I don't want to use the word "an encroachment" because everything is an encroachment, something that sped costs or whatever that I want to characterize as a problem, I call an encroachment on the general fund. My understanding of this is a general fund, you're expected, going back to No Child Left Behind, they give you X amount of money, and then you're supposed to gain efficiencies along the way, and at the end, you're penalized. So what portion of the entire budget does not receive a one-on-one recompense from funding source? What percentage of this budget is, are you required to find the rest of it through general fund expenditures, roughly? Okay, I appreciate you can run with this like this on the first meeting. It shows your competence. That was a compliment to you, sir. So I was never so happy as to see the cash registers come out of the lunchroom. And I am, I am terrible about something that sorts students. So for example, if you have something that's going to benefit a set of kids on a campus, and I won't give you any particular example, but I think you can all jump to your conclusion very quickly here. If a kid can't afford to the family budget or a set of circumstances to go do whatever thing else everyone else is doing, then there should not be people looking through the fence at the kids, or there should not be lines of the poor kid or the kid with the food stamps or whatever that is. So since everybody is now on the equivalent of free and reduced lunch, and knowing that free and reduced lunch is the criteria for free transportation, has there been a linear relationship made? Obviously not. Between free and reduced lunch and free transportation? So I'm not asking you to have a crystal ball, Kevin. I call you Kevin, correct? Good. So do you see at some point the state, based on your experience in finance, pulling the trigger back on free and reduced lunch for everyone? Or is it more like in your forecast, you'd be like, "I'm not going to be digging for money four years out. This looks like a good idea." Or can you not commit to that? So in the background of your budget, you probably are more likely to be going, "I can't depend on that money long-term." And that turns into a social problem for me in your, in your long-term of how we keep the cash registers out of the lunchrooms. So now these, these questions are going to become more pointed. And I do need to give some background. We know that sped, an IEP meeting gives the parent the right to choose to self-transport. The district is not going to suggest or mandate that you self-transport or tell you that you can't self-transport. That's a violation of IDEA. So we see the warrant register. I don't use the warrant register as a means to pick people out. As a matter of fact, when, before I sat up here, I was an advocate for putting an aide on a bus if there are the possibilities SED issues on the bus where my child does not attack someone else or be attacked by someone else. So blame me for the aides on the bus. But at the end of the day, is this district ready to incorporate the number of kids who are currently self-transported? What would that look like in terms of our bus fleet? So of course, this isn't my direction, but where I work, I'm responsible for my budget. I would be looking to see if the people who are self-transporting, if a portion of those decided that they did not want to self-transport, that we have the capacity to do those things and to forecast that out into the budget where we're able to supply a full service. So my next question about this self-transport thing, we can't compare self-transport to buses, to staff, to pensions and all those things. We know that the people that self-transport have basically the IRS mileage, okay? Is the money that we're paying for self-transport coming out of the transportation budget? Good. So if you were discovered that's not the case, please protect everyone's identity and their dignity, but that needs to be captured and extrapolated into what the actual cost of transportation in the district is. Okay? I think the sped stuff is... Okay, so how would you characterize the culture and climate on the bus right now? Is it friendly? This is not, be careful, you're diving into an empty pool. What I'm asking is, are customers ready to ride the bus? Do we have the social, do we have the social things in order where I don't have to have a bus driver afraid to report something because, you know, that's the parent, the parents in the in-crowd on that kid, and we've got people punching each other and beating each other up? Is there anything that is a problem on our buses right now significantly in which people would not want to ride our bus? Is there any concern that you have, again, to the climate on the bus, that my child is going to get up and punch some other kid in the face because we know how Tammy is, right? She's not that way, but let's just pretend she is. So is there any, relax, I'm talking. Maintain your candor in the meeting, please. So is there any concern that the kids who have moderate to severe needs are not getting the support, and that would mean the bus drivers getting the support they need? Anybody have any concern about that? So when we're talking about Mint and talking about how good we are and all these kinds of things, we're not going to have people come over here and be bullied on the bus or be afraid to ride the bus. So in our projection of 1,400 kids, 1,400 to break even, are we ready to transport those kids if we were to meet those goals? Think about what that looks like in your capital outlay in the next number of years. I like to bring people in. I see the programs are coming on. I see the financing is coming in. We can't wait until they're, and along those lines, is there any subsidization of the current bus fee where parents who are not Title I parents and free and reduced lunch, are they paying to have their kids transported and subsidizing the district? Are we aware of any of that? Okay, so I'm going to go back in history a little bit, and this is what scares me. You cut your own legs off sometimes by doing stuff like this. There was a time when this district was having a severe problem, and people were characterizing sped and transportation on encroachments to the general fund. So in other words, I conflict entrepreneur and make it look like those people are the bad guy, this person over here, whatever. I knew that the charter revenue was not sustainable, and here's how I knew. When you run a business, your business is based on the convenience of your customers. Is it easy to get the service? Is the service equitable? So when I, I knew that when we were cutting back and asking customers to subsidize our basic programs, because you've already told us your budget is not fully funded, and a portion of it comes out of this. But I knew that when you start asking parents for money, when the money starts coming back in, what is the first thing you do with the money? You restore and get rid of the subsidies that your parents and your customers are paying. Instead, we're making sure that people who stole $80 million got their money first. I am so happy to hear that nobody is subsidizing the system because it's very difficult right now with gas prices the way they are, with schedules the way they are, to have somebody be afraid to put their kid on the bus because number one, they're going to have to pay, and number two, their kid's going to get beat up by somebody who doesn't know how to behave. Lastly, could someone please explain to me the circumstances by which third-party vendors are used to transport our children in the district? Or should I explain my understanding of it? That might be easier. My understanding of it is this. Our association drivers have right to first refusal. Is that accurate? So let me give a theoretical. Let's say I have been driving all day. The kids that aren't acting up in the bus ever have gotten to me. I've had a really long day, and I don't feel like driving to Mammoth tonight and returning back at midnight. Would that be a fair characterization of when someone else might not want to drive the bus? Is that really the intent of our agreement with our association now? But what I'm trying to say is, this idea that we're using another party to transport our kids, is it not based on the fact that our bus drivers may not want to drive to Mammoth tonight? Is that, is that kind of the general idea? I mean, I do negotiations at work. I understand unions, believe me. And I'm not opening this up for everybody from the audience to engage in a negotiation session, but what I'm saying is, that's my understanding of the intent. Because outside of that, what we're doing is we're subcontracting out association work without meet and confer. Is that accurate? Kim's over there nodding her head, "Yeah." Last I heard, she was the HR director. Good. So under what circumstances, and I think I've laid them out pretty efficiently, is sped parents just all of a sudden decide, "We're all going to put our kids on the bus," and that mileage that the federal government gives you suddenly turns in to a cost that has a labor burden that goes with it, including pensions? If that big thing over there that they're building with, I don't know how many houses, actually puts kids in our school. I don't know what the plan is, what the developer is telling you, what the kick-in on that is, but I guarantee you, there's going to be at least one kid. So in the plan for three years out, where I work, I have to do capital improvement outlays for the next five years by project to get them funded because if I don't do that, I don't have any money, and then I can hang out all day like Tim. But at the end of it, what are, what is our capacity now? And what happens when this marketing that we're doing and the capture of kids that want to come to our school? What is our ability in the long-term to go through 10, 12, 15, and 25% enrollment increases? Is our ability to do that? And at what point do we trigger temporary use of these other services without inalienating the union partners that we have in our district? That's my big question, and I don't know it can be answered. With the funding that's coming in now, especially categorical funding that we will not have five and six years from now, and we're supposed to build efficiencies and these art things and all these things that we're doing, they are going to attract students. And when the day comes when you can't pick somebody up, or you're getting into details to Brianna's exception, to apply, you do have to apply if you're applying for inter-district transfer, if you're over there. And I, you know, we don't want to take on somebody else's problems, and I'm being as delicate as I can. But at the end of the day, I think you need to be able to look at the performance expectations of what this district is trying to achieve, tie the funding to it, and see the reality of it, not just pay lip service to the point where we've got full classrooms, no floor space, and no way to pick the kids up. And then I'm in fighting with these three in the front row because I've subcontracted out busing inadvertently because I can't meet or predict the demand. Amen. All right, I'm done. Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate an honest, open discussion, and I so much appreciate a superintendent does not tell you when it's okay for you to talk and not. I have lived those days. Okay, I've asked Alex to pull this up. The requirement is that we have consultations with all these stakeholders, and what I'm seeing is certificated staff, classified staff, school administrators, authorities and things like that. Nowhere up there does it talk about having a consultation with school board members. So the scope of this document is you reach out. I'm not interested in entertaining ideas about, you know, who drives bus on overload because my job is to ask for the district to be informed. So I think that it's good to forecast, everybody's asking for forecasts about what your ADA is going to look like. You know this game. Some administrators will say, "Well, our ADA is going to be 800." Now all of a sudden, surprise, it's 2,000. Oh, I'm the hero, right? Come on. Where's, where are these numbers coming from? There's a number of kids here. I've told you, I'm not interested in preditating the other schools and sending postcards. I swear, if I get another postcard asking my kid to go to a charter that's in my boundary, I swear, I'm going to get loose up here. I know where I want to send my kids. Thank you very much. But at the end of the day, I'm not interested in engaging conversation. When we consult with all those people, somebody has to grow. And I made a comment earlier, a public comment that maybe I shouldn't have made, but what I'm saying is, let's grow this up to we're all looking at the employees, and the employees are informing us and saying, "Hey, look, we are typically running into this level of staffing where we can't meet this, and if you're going to add on 10 more kids, if you're going to add on 50 more kids, or 20% of the sped kids that are currently self-funding, these are the projections that you're going to do." And I swear, you cannot inform the top end if the bottom end that's doing the work every day can't or doesn't feel free to give their input. This is the first time we've ever had this discussion, and just because it's robust and people are asking questions. You have people up here that run businesses and high-end stuff and people that get the phone calls about, "Why isn't this happening and why isn't that happening?" So that's our level of expertise, and you guys are smart enough to make it happen or tell me you can't. The fellow board members asked a couple of questions. What's the total amount of this contract? So that exceeds the 109,000 bid limit per se. Guys from Sunny Days, you might want to turn your mic off right now. How many formal complaints have we had about this vendor regarding the safety, treatment, or staff concerns with children? None. In your four years of service, so four, where I come from, four times three is, or three times three, so you have 90 kids in your class that you've dealt with. Can anybody tell me about what the residual is about the kids that start there and come to kindergarten roundup? Is there a trend? Or is this, was this characterized as mainly an after-school and before-school program? So are we servicing kids outside of the district? Well, that's unfortunate because we could route them right to our schools with the right number of buses without fees. Yes. So there's not been one complaint about any of their staff. There's not been a police response. The sheriff hasn't had to go over there. None of the staff have been put on suspension pending and paid administratively pending investigation. I move that we table this item until the concerns and questions that were brought up, especially a legal opinion. I do appreciate and recognize that the classifieds union has looked at this and is in support of it, and this is in no way. But I'm asking for a second that we table this until the questions can be answered. Please make sure that every effort is taken to do a blast out, that the board has asked for further description, and encourage anyone who has an objection to this or a support of it. I'm not a believer in grooming people to come up and speak to us one way or another. But everyone needs to understand, if I'm the culprit on the bus and I'm being disrespectful and slanderous or dangerous to other people on the bus, this will be captured. I don't want somebody coming in here and telling me that my kid, you know, that we're not in the business of putting in cameras and then asking the board's permission later. I've lived through that once. I don't want it again. Just please get a legal opinion, publish that in the staff report. Make sure that that's there. And give my apologies to the vendor. I'm not questioning the purchasing here. I'm just making sure all of our ducks in a row. This is a bomb waiting to go off. Thank you.